Are we ready?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Alright, so. The May 12th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. We've already performed the invocation. And I guess we will repeat the invocation and we'll repeat the, and then we'll go ahead and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'll have a. I'll have Councilmember Tayeda do the Pledge of Allegiance. And then I'll repeat the, or Councilmember Montero can do the invocation. Everyone, please stand.
Okay, put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, bow your head. Thank you, God. The greatest being in the universe to bring us together today to make this tough decisions. Thank you to our police department, our business, our staff that gathered together so we can soon reopen our business and continue our health, our lives, you know, in a good way. And so we ask in the name of the Lord that this meeting will be safe and respectful. And we will make a decision that will bless our cities and our staff. Amen.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
You have any communications?
Yes, I have two, I have a gentleman on the phone right now. And he will go ahead and get started now. You have three minutes, Jerry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jerry Chamcochin. I miss being there in person, but I certainly understand the issues affecting us all. Many of you are aware of the Planet Fitness Gym that was approved last week by the planning director. And that's located in the former Fallow's Paradise store on 131st Street and Hawthorne Boulevard. Many people and businesses in the community believe that the planning director and city staff have ignored various Hawthorne Municipal Code sections liability concerns relating to the city's 20-foot alley. And more importantly, the requirement to provide adequate parking to service this business. One of the local businesses in the area that's very concerned about this use is the Dollar Tree. And I provided you with a letter from Jeff Forman, which I trust you have received in my packet. We have many other issues with the Planet Fitness approval that the planning director granted last week. And one big problem is a lack of available member parking. A normal Planet Fitness has about 7,000 to 13,000 members in need. Over 200 parking spaces to officially, to efficiently operate. And not burden the city streets or other area businesses. For some reason, the Hawthorne planning director has only required Planet Fitness to have 77. But it's actually 67 if you consider that they have 10 employees that work there. So how is it possible that a gym with 1,500 workouts a day and over 200 workouts during peak hours can park their business in 67 actual parking spaces? I did a study and I just sent a copy of a revised study to Arnie with regards to what nearby cities are doing. And all the cities have parking requirements between 100 and 150 square feet per. One space for every 150 square feet. So I provided that to you. You should have, and if not, Arnie will give it to you. Our concern is, once again, where are all these members going to park? And that's something that I ask you to consider. Other problems include increased traffic in the alley, which is dangerous already. And will be dangerous, even more dangerous with the abundant, abundance of cars that are going to be using it. City liability concerns regarding safe passes across the alley. And also a significant problem will be the area homeless issue. We'll talk about that briefly. A potentially unreliable traffic study, which was, which was just generated by the traffic engineer, which used a Planet Fitness in Norwalk, 23 miles away from the city, and ignored data from two Planet Fitness clubs in Inglewood. Also, Planet Fitness has a 24-hour operations requirement or operations. And they have no operating conditions or mitigation measures for this 24-hour, seven-day week operation. There will be substantial vehicular traffic.
Sir, sir, you have 10, 10 seconds.
Okay. At a very minimum, I would ask that this, that the Hawthorne Planning, the Hawthorne City Council act as a body and appeal the planning director's decision pursuant to HMC 1706. And send this to the planning commission for study and review. The citizens and businesses in this area both need and deserve your protection, especially from the parking perspective. Because how can they park hundreds of cars per hour in a 67-space parking lot? Thank you very much. And I sure hope you will, you will study this. Because the lines of, of many people in this area will, are going to be significantly impacted if this Planet Fitness opens.
Thank you.
And the homeless issue is, is an attachment number four. You can review that yourself. But there's an incident right now, and I have firsthand knowledge of it because I own a gym in Hawthorne. And the homeless people certainly are looking to gyms as a safe haven. And when you have a membership at $10 a month. And you've, and you've provided pizza and bagels or, or food to them.
I'm sorry, sir, you're out of time.
I understand. I thank you very much. And I hope you'll appeal this so the planning, the, the, the planning commission can study it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chamcochin. Alright.
And there's another, there's an email as well.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the following email, let's see. It's from Melanie Wise Yamboa. Hello, please approve the moratorium that extends to December 31st for Hawthorne residents. Why? Because it's the right thing to do. If you were truly against gentrification, then you would support this measure. That is all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Melanie. Thank you so much. Okay, so let's see. Your consent, there's nobody else wishing to talk to this city council? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed, ordered. Mr. Clerk, can you read the consent calendar, please?
Uh, yes, I can. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have 10 items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item five, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting on May 14th, 2019. Item six, approval waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, treasure, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item nine, resolution number 8176, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the five-year reportable fees report for fiscal 20, fiscal years 2010 through 2011 to 2014 through 2015 pursuant to California Government Code Section 6601D1. Item 10, resolution number 8189, a resolution of the city, uh, city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, ordering the Director of Public Works City Engineer to prepare a report for the street lighting maintenance district of the city of Hawthorne for fiscal year 2020, 2021, as required by the Streets and Hawthorne Highways Code Section 22622. Item 11, resolution number 8190, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy weight abatement assessments and setting a hearing date on June 9th, 2020 at 6:00 PM for such proposed assessments. Item 12, resolution number 8191, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to establish an annual employee appreciation day between the months of May and August. Item 13, resolution number 8192, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, supporting Senate Bill 990 to suspend Assembly Bill 5, which prohibits Californians from doing business as independent contractors. Item 14, resolution number 8193, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to accept schedule of payments for building permits on 100-unit condo, you, 100-unit, unit mixed-use development at 14200 Corn Blum Avenue. Item 15, resolution number 8194, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to accept schedule of payments for development impact fees on Amazon Ring parking garage for adoption.
I would like to pull 12 and 13 for discussion, please.
I'd like to pull 14. Okay. I make a motion on all others?
Second.
Please vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote, the vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Uh, discussion on number 12. Go ahead.
Um, yes, item number 12. I am proud to sponsor and support item 12, which is a resolution 8191, authorizing the city manager to establish an annual employee appreciation day between the months of May and August. And I think that may need to be flexible because we may not be out of, uh, we may not be able to, uh, out, out of the social distancing guidelines by August. So I think that those months need to be flexible.
Okay.
I am proud to sponsor and support this bill, this agenda item. Um, I believe it serves a public purpose. So this is not a gift of public funds. It's very important for us to, uh, to support our employees to, uh, so that it can improve their morale, their teamwork, and their productivity. And I think those, that, that helps to provide the public purpose that we need in order to do this. I think we, we, we are very proud of our employees. They, they perform, they perform beautifully for us through good times and bad times. And I think they deserve to be recognized on a regular basis. We had an employee appreciation day last year. For the first time, it was very well received. And I want to see it continued. So I would like to move that, um, that this be an annual event.
Second. Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay. Discussion on number 13?
Uh, yes, this is, um, resolution 8192. Again, I am proud to sponsor and support this resolution. This will sus, this, if it passes, will, um, if, if Senate Bill 8, 8, 8, uh, I'm sorry, 990 passes, uh, which I am supporting, it, um, it will suspend Assembly Bill 5, which prohibits Californians from doing businesses as independent contractors. As you know, um, Assembly Bill 5 was passed, which, uh, converted numerous consulting and related professions from independent contractor status to common law employee status. It caused many businesses, um, to, who retained certain individuals whose skill sets were not specifically carved out in AB 5 to lose their business relationships. Um, and because of the, uh, high unemployment caused by COVID-19, Senator Morlock is, is proposing that this bill, that AB 5 be suspended for two years. And I, 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 I would like to be, see it suspended permanently, but that's another story. Right now, we can have it suspended for two years because I think it has had such a negative effect on, uh, those who, um, who are in the, uh, what they call the gig employment. So, so, um, jobs and industries involving people who do ride sharing, food delivery, design services, single truck owner operators, interpreting translating services, occupational therapists, nonprofits, and many, many more. All of these have been negatively impacted by AB 5 by requiring that they be considered, their, that their employees be considered, um, or, uh, or, or I'm sorry, or that they be considered employees of companies where, um, where they were, they were independent contractors in the past. So, um, I wholeheartedly support, um, Senator Morlock's bill to, uh, to suspend this for two years. And at least I, I assume that his, his purpose for doing this is to give us a chance to, um, to, to turn our economy back, uh, back, back in, into positive, into a positive area. Um, and I would like if it, if it passes, if we pass it, I would ask that the city attorney send copies to, um, Senator Morlock, to Assembly Member Burke, to Senator Bradford, to Governor Newsom, and to the League of California Cities. So I move that.
Uh, to the chair.
I move passage of resolution of, um, of, uh, resolution 8191.
Does anybody have a second or?
Uh, to the chair, I have a question.
Okay, the discussion, uh, well, she asked a motion. Anybody willing to second that? Because it's been moved. Yeah, I'll second.
I'm sorry, 8193. I misspoke. It's 8193.
It's been moved and seconded, but there's discussion now. Go ahead, Mayor Potem.
Well, I want to ask Ms. Valentine because I, I, I understand that, that Assembly Bill 5 was to protect some of the employees. Because if some, some employers that designate these employees, you know, uh, independent contractors, it's for them not to pay them benefits, like healthcare, unemployment, all of that. That's, that bill was to protect employees so they can get some type of, uh, benefits. So I'm, um, I'm inclined to tell you the truth, not to, not, not to vote on this because I think we need more clarification because, uh, the Assembly Bill 5 was to protect employees. Because some of the employers wanted to designate them as a independent contractor. So they would not pay them healthcare benefits, employment benefits, none of the benefit that, uh, regular employees will, will receive. So it is a double-edged sword here, uh, what these senators trying to do.
But I, I also think what, and I think you raise a good point. But from the other standpoint, there were many of these employee, employees who did not want to be protected. They weren't asking for protection. They wanted to be free to engage in, um, in, in, they wanted to have the freedom of, uh, of earning, earning money on, as, as they saw fit. And they did not want to be tied to an employer. They wanted to be independent contractors. So in my view, it negatively impacted, uh, more employee, more, more of the workers than it, than it protected.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, to the chair.
Go ahead.
That, you know, it, it's almost like if you hire a plumber to come to your house, he's an employee and you got to give him work miscompensation and you've got to make, uh, all sorts of things available to a plumber or an electrician or, uh, so you got to be a little careful once you start down that road. Uh, in the real estate business, we've always had that, whether we're employees or we're independent contractors. And it's been back and forth, back and forth. We're still considered independent contractors. But, um, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Valentine because, um, you might help a few, but you're going to hurt a lot. And, uh, and Alex, if you want to have more discussion, I, I don't see anything wrong with that. But I, I'd hate to be that where everybody is a employee now. Because you're going to hurt more people than you're going to hurt.
Yeah, to the chair.
You're going to hurt more than you're going to help.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Council, uh, Mayor Potem.
That is what we need more information because plumbers, eh, eh, they not be considered, uh, you know, employees. Uh, because plumber, you just hire them for a few hours or.
No, I know, but there's a lot of people like that.
Yeah. So, so Russell, to tell you the truth, I, I, I believe this bill, I propose not to send, uh, letters on behalf of the city. Uh, but maybe individual council can send letters if they want to.
How do you feel about that, Councilwoman?
Well, I think we should take a vote on it. I think that's what we're here for. And it's for, and it's for a two-year suspension. It's not, it's for a two-year suspension of AB 5 while we're in, while we are negatively impacted by, uh, COVID-19. So unless the, unless the bill is reenacted, um, the, 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 the suspension, the suspension will be terminated in two years and it will go back to being effective again if the legislature doesn't change it.
To the chair, but I don't see nothing on this bill talking about COVID-19. This was, this was, this was, uh, uh, this was, this bill was set up by this, uh, Morlock guy before the COVID-19, correct? Because they always wanted to overturn the Assembly 5 bill. It was not about COVID-19. But like Ms. Valentine said, we can take a vote. So, you know.
Would it, is there, Mr. City Attorney, is there more additional information you can give us beyond this? So that like, uh, a proper decision could be made?
Uh, the part about whether or not the bill was already planned before the COVID-19 crisis, I don't know that. But I read a number of criticisms about AB 5, about how it has hurt the jig workers who basically prefer the, the ability to, to basically go from place to place rather than to be an employee. So there are two sides to, to every issue.
And I've, I've received, personally, I've received, um, support for messages and support of AB 5 itself. And messages against the AB 5 also. And I see both sides. So I, honestly, I really don't know how AB 5 would probably even accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. Because there are people that want to work independently, and then there's people that want to be employed. But if you don't have something in place, how are you going to prevent unscrupulous companies from not bringing in people who should be under their employment rosters? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And to the chair, the example, for example, is the Uber drivers and the Lyft drivers, right? That these company wants them to, to be an independent contractor. But the state have said no, and even the, I think they went to court, and even the court upheld the state decision that Uber, Uber and Lyft should not be independent contractors. So it is, like I say, it's a double-sword edge over here. So, uh, you know.
I don't know.
I, I, I think, you know, as a.
Do, would you like to go, do we like to go ahead with the vote, Councilwoman, or would you like to further information? I don't know. I'm kind of in the middle, to be honest.
Um, well, what, when you say in the middle, and, and are you saying, what, what is it that you want to delay the wait, vote to do?
No. I mean, we could vote today if that's what you like, what you would like.
Well, I mean, I'm saying, what would you, what, when you're saying you, would, would you like to delay the vote? What is it that you want to accomplish by delaying the vote?
With, to look deeper into both sides' perspective, like the, those who do wish to, the challenges for those who want to be employees of a company and unscrupulous companies are purposely trying to throw them out on the street and throw them into the independent contractor, uh, column. And those who do want to work independent, see what their viewpoints are on this stuff.
I'm willing to, to, I'm, I'm willing to, uh, to table it so that we can get more information and get, get studied further.
Mr. Mr. City Attorney, is that something you could probably provide us based on what we just said? Additional information?
Yes, there's plenty of information for and against, uh, AB 5, and I'll get that to you.
Do you feel that?
Yeah.
Do you feel you gave us sufficient or not? Or there's additional information that you, we could vote?
Uh, I'll get you, I'll get you, uh, both sides. Okay?
Okay.
To the chair, yeah, the pros and cons of AB 5, and also, uh, more information about the senator's bill, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, but I mean, if there's anybody disagrees, we can vote. Is it? Okay. I'm just putting it out there. Okay, so let's move on to discussion on 14?
14. Yeah, I, I know that, that's, uh, project's already been approved and that's fine. And I don't have any problem with the project. But I, I spent a lot of time on the planning commission. And one of the things that we were always trying to establish and accomplish was homeownership. And that we didn't want apartments, you know, that we wanted people to own their own unit. And that would, that would, uh, encourage and it's better for the community as a whole. And I want to find out, you know, some of these, uh, developers, they'll build some condos, but they, they end up keeping them as rentals. And that's never really the intention of the approval. The approval is basically to create housing for, you know, for the public to, to purchase and, and increase homeownership. Uh, and I'd like to, uh, know, uh, Russell, if, if, uh, if there's something we can do with these developments that would, uh, you know, ensure that these things don't end up being, uh, a big, huge apartment building. Because that's never been what we wanted to do. Is there something we can do that we can look into that legally?
Uh, with regard to this project, no. But if you want us to look into it for future projects, we'll look into it.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like that. I'd like to, to see how in the future we can, you know, tighten the, the deal a little bit more where we end up getting what we actually originally thought we were going to get, which was, you know, homeownership.
Yes.
Nobody wanted apartment. I remember that from the planning commission. Nobody wanted more apartments. They, they would, they tolerate condominiums as long as they became, uh, owner, owner occupied. So, yeah.
Chair, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I do agree with, with Mike because, like I said, you know, some people are building this condominium and they not actually put them for sale. So they've been renting them. So in the, in the future, we probably would want to put like, uh, some type of language there that they would, they had, or they have to sell at least 90% of those condominiums. And, and maybe allow them to keep one or two, right, Russell? Is something that can be done like that?
Um, we have done it in the past, but there are limits on what the, the city can do. And I'll, I'll tell you, you know, legal confidential, uh, what that is.
Fine.
Because we have done it in the past.
So P360, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
And there's a, there might be a limit as to how long we ask the people who buy to stay as owners. But then also the enforcement aspect needs to be considered. If we can't enforce it, what good is it trying to come up with the strong, strong policies if you can't even enforce it there? Okay. So is there a motion for this?
Motion.
Seconded.
Please, uh, please vote. Roll call, please. Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Tayeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine? And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Public hearings?
Item number 17, uh, now is the time and place for a public hearing for the approval of the draft 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan, 2020, 2021 action plan, and 2020, 24 analysis of impediments to fair housing choice in connection with the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs. Recommended motion, one, conduct a public hearing to receive comments from members of the public. And two, consider and approve the 2020, 2024 Consolidated Plan, 2020, 2021 Action Plan, and 2020, 2024 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice for the City of Hawthorne Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships, Home Programs, finding the approval of these documents except from the National Environmental Policy Act and California Environmental Quality Act. And authorizing the city manager to, A, submit the City of Hawthorne 2020, 2024 Consolidated Plan, 2020, 2021 Action Plan, and 2020, 24, 2024 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. B, execute the 2021 CDBG and Home Program Grant Agreement and all related documents on behalf of the city. And C, execute subrecipient agreements with the nonprofit organizations receiving allocations of CDBG and home funds in the action plan, and authorize the city manager or their designated to be the official representative of the City of Hawthorne to submit required environmental documentation for CDBG and home improvements, home projects. Um, Mr. City Clerk, were there any communications on this item?
No, there were not.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the topic? Um, nobody in the audience. Um, so I'll declare the hearing closed, so ordered. Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes, sir.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay. So we are on item number eighteen?
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the ordinance twenty two zero one and ordinance of the City of. Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Title One. General Provisions, Title Fifteen Buildings and Construction and Title Seventeen Zoning. To add additional enforcement strategies such as withholding of permits and adding application considerations to address delinquent fines, zoning violations. And continuing violations of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. Planning Department's Declaration Publication File, no written communications were received.
Alright. Uh, is, so nothing, no written communications? Okay, if there's nobody wishing to speak to the city council, I'll declare the hearing closed, so order. Can you please read ordinance number twenty two oh one, please?
Yes, first reading, the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Amending Title One General Provisions, Title Fifteen Buildings and Construction. And Title Seventeen Zoning to add additional enforcement strategies such as withholding of permits and adding application considerations. To address delinquent fines, zoning violations and continuing violations of the Hawthorne Municipal Code for introduction.
Um, go ahead, uh, I'm going to go ahead and introduce. We're gonna need Councilmember Taeda to recuse himself from item number twenty. Since he will be getting a fireworks booth. You recognize that?
Go under the desk or what?
What, what's, what's the requirement, Mr. City Attorney? Is he okay?
Yeah, I know, I, 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 I'll go outside.
Just step outside for a brief. Can you unmute yourself, Mr. City Attorney?
We will, uh, just have him step outside for a minute and mute him.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
To the mayor, before we go to item nineteen, uh, quick question, uh. We were supposed to have a presentation, uh, on, on, on that, uh, um, CDBG, right?
Oh, yeah, we, we still can, you know, I think we just missed it. Would, would you like Kimberly to do the presentation after this?
Well.
How do you feel about that? You wanna go back to that?
You wanna go back, um, uh, the mayor made the motion so quick that we just, uh, forgot.
How, how do you feel about that, Mayor Potem?
Well, I'm fine because I read it, so, but I'll make a, I'll make a comment during my, uh, my, my time.
Okay.
Uh, it's fine.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, cause I read.
Are we ready to go ahead and? We have.
I'd like to have some discussion on this.
Absolutely. I'm going to ask the city manager to go ahead and, uh, the interim city manager.
I'm here.
Can you please read this for us? Do you have a copy of it?
I do. It's, um, I believe it's item nineteen here.
Uh, I don't, I think it's, is it ratified VFW, the, okay, go ahead, you know.
Is it item twenty? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, city manager's consent calendar, item twenty, ratified VFW, American Legion, Wounded Heroes, Jim Thorpe. Junior Baseball League and Del Air, uh, Del Air Baptist. Church has certified applicants to have a safe and sane fireworks booth pursuant to Hawthorne Municipal Code. Section eight point three, four point zero eight five subsection B.
Go ahead. Discussion, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I, July fourth is, is coming up pretty soon and I don't think we're going to be. In a position where we can ignore, um, social distancing ob- obligations at that point. So I think we need to put something in the order which requires the, the, the fireworks booths to observe. Whatever regulation is in place, uh, from the County of Los Angeles at that time. Uh, regarding social, regarding social distancing and, um, and, and, and. Regarding businesses, I don't know what category of business this would be considered. But certainly when people are online, they're in very close proximity to each other, so. Um, we, I think we need to have something in place that says if. You know, whatever, whatever the county rules are at that time, this, these. The, 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 uh, applicants must agree to adhere to, um, to these rules.
Yeah, the city doesn't need any special order to give because everybody is under the county's, uh, general order about social distancing. And besides, all of the applicants have already been advised that. We don't know if these, uh, safe and sane fireworks booths will go forward. Given that the, the stay-at-home order may be extended through the end of July.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're saying we don't need to have anything else added?
No. They're in LA County and they're under LA County's, uh, health order.
Okay, that's fine.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Taeda is abstaining or not present, um, Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Um, yes, please.
The vote, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes with Councilmember Taeda absent.
Okay, city council discussion, action items?
If he can, we gotta get councilperson Taeda back, hold on one second. Mayor Potem Montero, can you grab him? I think he's outside.
Are we good?
Yeah.
So are we, uh, going to allow the celebration of the greatest country that's ever been, uh? Uh, the birth?
Oh, no.
Okay, are we ready, uh?
We're gonna do it.
Are we ready? Chief? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. City councils, discussion, action items, we have about twenty-two, twenty-three, four of them? No, five of them, actually. So what I have before us is the draft disclosure ordinance that I requested. For elected officials, commissioners on all public hearing items concerning land use. Zoning and other public nuisance determinations. Disclosure would require disclosure of all ex parte contracts, contacts. Whether it's from the principal person or surrogates of that person. Um, to address and most directly, uh, achieve transparency. Uh, the na- nature of the communication. And I had directed the city attorney to provide copies of the draft ordinance that you should have. And the ordinance reads, uh, in ordinance of the city council of the City of California, Californ- uh, Hawthorne, California. Enacting chapter two point three to title two. The administration, the civil service and personnel section of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. Enacting the Hawthorne Transparency, Disclosure and Accountability Reform Act, and I'd like to make a motion.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Uh, so yeah, I, I read through the ordinance, um. Uh, Russell did a good job writing it out, um. But there are still some holes that could be taken advantage of and, and it comes back to. You should have a line in there that describes if whoever's coming in for a permit or a zoning or the case might be. To have a line in there saying that if they, if any council member has taken funds. From them or their LLCs should also be put into the city, uh, clerk's report. Um. That, that's the best way of getting the supreme transparency, um. If they're coming up for any kind of land use or zoning change for the council, just like an extra layer.
I appreciate that, um, but I still believe that the four sixties already have that disclosure information that's already transparent, so.
It's not because LLCs are very hard for regular residents to find out who owns what, um. You know, it took me with my MBA degree from USC to actually have forensic accounting to understand where to look for all these LLCs and. Kind of trace them back to the original person. So yes, you can look at the four sixties, but to be very frank. Um, it's limited, um, unless you have LexisNexis, which is not readily available to the public. Um, or you have your own attorney through you look into, you know, all these LLCs. It's very easy to hide and funnel money. In this process, I mean, we've seen it a lot. I mean, that's why there hasn't been a lot of red flags drawn up. It's because it's. Easy to hide and hard for residents to really see who owns it.
I really appreciate your feedback on that. Uh, does anybody else have any comments on this? Well, will anybody provide a second on this, please?
It's just an introduction.
It's just an introduction?
Okay.
Well, we have it listed as a, uh, potential provoke.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, sorry, it should just say introduction.
Okay, then it's been introduced, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Awad, item number twenty-three?
Yeah, so this is back to, um, the campaign reform, uh, discussing two items of it. Uh, term limits and then the disclosure of, um. Putting a limit on how much each council member can take in from a donation. Um, I went ahead and provided, let's see here, made a matrix. Of the surrounding cities, um, so for the city of Hermosa Beach. Um, their contribution limit is at two fifty, um, El Segundo's at five hundred. Uh, Culver City's at five hundred, Gardenia's at a thousand, Manhattan Beach is a thousand and Torrance is a thousand. Um, I looked at these six cities since they're adjacent and in the South Bay and around us. Um, they tend to deal with a lot of developers in the same fashion. And seeing how they've put a cap and limit on their city finances during the campaign. Um, I think it's something that we should kind of look into and move forward to, um. And not seeing kind of a hesitation on it, with the same with term limits, um, having two terms in either position. Um, both for mayor and council, uh, would really help with the flow and bring in fresh ideas and. Consistency, um, especially for the residents, and this is all just for the residents themselves. So I know there's like no dictatorship regarding a city, I mean, a lot of cities have these term limits, which is normal. Um, and in the campaign, um, finance side, um, I listed those six to kind of give some background as in we're not the only ones kind of doing this. And there's a precedent for us moving forward on some sort of campaign reform for the residents.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question for Russell. Ross, about the term limit, right? Because, uh, you know, I was a, a, a. A proponent of it since before I became a city councilman. If we wanna go two term for council, two term for mayor, do we, this had to be done by the city council or have to be passed by the voters?
A ballot.
A ballot, yes.
Yes.
So, so, so this will not come to the ballot until, uh, because now it's too late for twenty twenty, right?
No, um, I think we, we, we have a little bit of time, but it's, uh, it's coming close very soon.
Uh-huh.
But, uh, it would, it wouldn't become effective until after the election.
Correct.
If, if it is passed.
Uh-huh. Because, you know, the term limit I'm in favor about, uh, uh, campaign reform donation, that is a question that right now, I, I. I, I would put it aside until maybe the. Coming up after this election, but the term limit, I'm in favor of it. Because that's something that, that I was, I was proponent of it before I became city council.
Sure.
But turnlist, I can see, can you give your reasoning on the campaign finances as we're the only cities lacking in it?
Well, see, the problem about that is because you guys already started campaigns, you got, already start taking money. So, so it would not be fair for another candidate, let's say, is going to fill up the paper on July thirteen to become a candidate. Uh, and then there'll be a disadvantage because some of you already started campaigning. And taking money, so it's, it will be, it would not be a fair process at this time. But.
How is that?
For the future, uh, for the future election, maybe I would support. But the term limit, I want us to talk about it and maybe move forward if it is still time to put it on the ballot, I would love to put it on the ballot. But if, if it's gonna cost money, also we maybe have to think about it, how much it's gonna cost.
Mister City Attorney, could you give us something with regards to the term limits, uh, of, of full study on that?
Yeah, uh, you may remember it, but it, yeah, it actually was, uh. Uh, we did prepare a resolution for the term limits, but the council could not, uh, agree. On the wording because there's just so many ways that you can do the term limits. Uh, such as somebody could have two terms, they could wait out one election, then run again. And what happens if somebody, uh, is a council member and becomes mayor, then how do we, uh, uh? You know, figure that in, are they limited to the term, two terms because they were a council member for four years and a?
Wasn't that something that I brought up?
So the, these were all, these were all the complexities of just doing something that you think is a simple ordinance, but it's not.
So then just take a, just look at it.
There's, 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 there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um.
One of the times.
Ready, so it's not like we have to rewrite anything, um.
Oh, no, that's not the problem, that, that's not the problem. The problem is you all agreeing to one particular sample ordinance.
For the residents, I, I believe we'll come to an agreement to have it on the ballot, um, especially to protect the residents for the future. Um, uh, we should be coming, this is like the simplest kind of decision we're gonna be making. Compared to everything else we're dealing with. I mean, we're dealing with COVID nineteen and we're moving forward those items, buildings and, and all these permits. Deciding on term limits and how that kind of goes forward. It's a lot easier than figuring out our budget, especially after this pandemic. So I, I believe that it's something simple that we should move forward. And, uh, I agree with Montero, that if we can come together and bring it before, I think it's either July or June is the last time we can have something on the ballot. To place it on there and have the residents decide.
I'm going to suggest that, uh, that, that the city attorney drafts something. That he would consider a reasonable, uh, term limits proposal and, uh, and show it to us and, um, let us, let us work from there.
To the chair, uh, I think what I'll do instead is I'll provide you with samples from other jurisdictions, then you can all agree upon which one you like the most.
Alright.
To the chair?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, to Russell, uh, basically think about this, okay, so the, so the. Two term for council, that's been eighty years, right? Four and four. Then if somebody got elected to mayor, so they would still have to serve two term for mayor and that's it. So that is what you need to think, or they spend eighty years on the council or eighty years on to be mayor, two terms, right? But let's say if, if, if I was electing mayor in November. So I can serve two terms as mayor, that's it.
That's right.
Eight years, that's it.
Yes, and also, most of these ordinances are not retroactive, so if you've already been on the council for eight, ten, twelve, fourteen years.
Twenty years.
It's prospective.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, they'll begin, uh, this will start not until twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Right, so, so that's what you need to think about when you, when you draft the.
Can you, can you provide, okay, so, uh, can you provide us with that information?
Yes.
We'll move on to item number twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Councilmember Awad, item number twenty-four?
Uh, for the campaign limits though, um.
Oh, dude, I'm sorry, did I, uh, you still have some more stuff to say about it?
Yeah. Um, it, it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I thought you were finished.
Um, I, I understand where you're coming from, um, when you're saying that, you know, some people have been campaigning or regardless of. That outside, um, but remember, it's, it's, we're not looking at what's fair for the candidates, we're looking at what's fair for the residents. There, there's a very big difference on who you're trying to have your focus on, um, so it's, it's, it's okay, I mean, it's, it's, this is gonna, and be an item that's gonna keep coming up. Um, because it's, it's geared for the residents, so if you wanna continue as a council to, you know, look in the camera and. And look at the residents and say, look, we don't care about how you may be feeling about this, we're just looking out for ourselves running. Uh, because that's, that's what it sounds like, um, which is great that it's, you know, this is recorded, we're having these public meetings, but it's. It's for the residents and it, we're looking at how, what's fair for them regardless of what's, you know, the people running for.
Okay. Alright.
So we'll bring it back for another discussion, uh, maybe have a draft looked at compared to what other cities are doing. And that'll be along the same time when, um, our city attorney brings back the, uh, term limit ordinance for us to look at. Um, so that we can continue having a discussion, uh, now, now, Russell, for that, for campaign limits, would that need to be a ballot or can that be done by council?
Uh, you can do that. The council.
The council, yes, okay. Okay, good, um, so the next, next item we have here, um.
Just a moment, just a moment, is there anybody else that would like to speak on item number twenty-three?
Uh, just a clar- clar- clarification, what we asking Russell, this is a director from all of us. Is on term limit, not on campaign funding, correct? Or I'm mistaken?
Well, yeah, because of.
As well. For the sit, for the, for the council to look at as well at the same time. Um, to have something drafted, the same way I had something drafted for the moratorium eviction. So we'll have both to look at. Um, and then we can move on one or the other, because the campaign reform, again, can be done by council. We're not on a strict timeline, uh for the term limits, we have until, I believe, either June or July to have it on the ballot. So that one, we would have to take quick action to have it implemented uh twenty twenty-one. So that's the difference.
Okay. Did you also want the city clerk to give a price tag for the ballot measure?
Yes.
Well, you have to. Oh, well, look into that and I'll provide it. Oh, can you summarize with the, what, what you understood, Mister City Attorney, just so that everybody understands?
Uh, I'm gonna provide you with samples of uh term limit ordinances from other cities.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was a joint request from the council. Okay, so let's move on to twenty-four.
Twenty-four is on the eviction moratorium. So, um, Russell, you did, it was, it was wonderful working with you and trying to get this ordinance drafted. Um, if, if many of you've read it, uh it gives it a thirty-day extension from when the county um or state lifts their eviction moratorium. Um, now, it looks like we might be pushing into July. So, um, just to, just to clarify, uh city attorney, both languages are in there, correct? Where it's either thirty days from May thirty-first or thirty days from when the ban is actually lifted?
Um, it's uh, it's thirty days after May thirty-first. Um, with the, within mind that we can amend the ordinance when the emergency is extended.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Uh, I thought we're reading in there that it had language in that already uh for that scenario.
Yes, and I, I, I need to make that more clear, but um the idea was basically, we didn't want to overreach here. Because um in order for this ordinance to be constitutional, it has to coincide with the duration of the uh state emergency.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, that's
Mister, uh, Mister City Attorney?
There's a couple more points just to clarify for the residents. Um, so we have it for, uh, it's thirty days after, and then they'll have six months after. Well, six-month period time for them to pay back their due rent. But it's not rent forgiveness, just to make sure that's clarified. It's not like they're forgiven rent, they have to make some sort of payment program with the landlord and prove that they've had some kind of drastic or, you know, some kind of drop in the revenue stream during the COVID nineteen pandemic, and then work from there.
Oh, yes, and uh, Mike, can you uh plug in Allison? Allison drafted the ordinance and she can answer these questions.
Been doing so now?
Yes.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Allison, did you hear uh uh council member Hawa- Hawa's uh question?
Yes, and this was regarding the um six-month payback time uh for the tenants to become current with their back due rent. And we do make it clear in the ordinance that it is not rent forgiveness, it is a method of not paying your full rent while your income is reduced, but you will still be responsible for your full rent over time.
Okay. Um, that's perfect. And then again, just to go over the reasoning for um, so we're saying, there, there's language in both, but you're gonna have it more clear saying that uh it's thirty days after May thirty-first, or if it's extended, thirty days from that point?
Correct. If, if, if it is extended by the governor, it will then extend for thirty days from the date that the uh lockdown is lifted.
Wonderful.
Mister uh, Mister City Attorney? Mister City, can you, okay, so I'm gonna request that uh we call a special meeting so we can pass an urgency ordinance. That way, we'll be able to help the renters and the commercial tenants immediately, as opposed to waiting for an ordinance that takes too much time. So if there's anybody, would try to coordinate maybe something for this Thursday, so we can go ahead and enact this? I mean, this is something I talked to you about, you know, recently also at a couple meetings ago, so I wanna make sure that we actually, since everything's been figured out. That we can go ahead and have that. Is that something we can do?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, let's go ahead. Is that, is everybody in favor of that?
Is everybody? Yeah, but to be clear, uh, there's one more point I want to mention. For the commercial side, um, city attorney, can you explain that the commercial side of it is the same for, I mean, the residential side is the same for commercial?
Uh, yes. Because the governor's order only dealt with residential, but our ordinance also includes both residential and commercial.
Okay, excellent. Uh, yeah, I wanted to make it a little stronger, and then uh just for, to have it on the record, um, city clerk by chance. I mean, we're seeing a lot of emails regarding this item. Um, do you have the number of emails? Uh, just so we can have on record received for this item?
No, I do not have the number. I can, um, do I need a, I can try to look into it now and then towards the end of the meeting, I can send it to you.
I, I can give a um account that we can, then you can verify later. I believe it was, we all received roughly two hundred and twelve separate emails um from residents within Hawthorne. Um. It was quite astounding to see that kind of support for this item, and it kind of shows how the city was feeling and how the residents are feeling during this pandemic, that they are really struggling and they need something like this. Um, so yeah, if you can go back and verify that, that's how many that we all received. Uh, and that would be great. And this is a great thing that we're doing, both for the residential side and then the um commercial side, and I'm glad we're, we're moving on this item. Uh, quickly.
I'd like to ask if we, if you know whether you received any uh comments from uh, from the businesses? Uh, from the commercial side, did we get any um comments from them, or was it only renters? Uh, uh, re- residential renters.
Are you asking myself or are you asking?
Who, yes, whoever has the information.
I think we all have that. Um, and they're, they, and they were coming from both sides. Um, both residential and commercial, uh especially the commercial side where we have the breweries and the production companies coming out. Um, tho- that side sent out emails as well because they're struggling. Because they're not on frontage, commercial uh properties tend to take a ding, especially when they're further in and not on some sort of you know, frontage on a boulevard or a high-traffic street. So our, our breweries also took a heavy dive, our production, some of our manufacturing side over there. Um, they've also sent an email as regarding the issue.
To the chair.
Yeah, I don't remember getting two hundred emails. I saw a few.
To the chair.
No, it's on record to
Councilman, uh council member, uh Mayor Proton?
Well, yeah, all, all, all of us uh are supporting uh of this moratorium for, for thirty days, because we know people are struggling out there. But again, at the same time, we have also to understand that the landlords, the property owners, they have mortgage to pay. So that is where we have to be reasonable, right? And I appreciate um Mister Haidara Watt pushing this and, and thank you for getting people instruction how to send the email, that it was very clever, so thank you very much.
Voice their opinion out, because it's very hard for them to get access to meetings. To make fun of, of freedom of speech and something that's, that's very
Okay, let's, let's move on to the next item. Number twenty-five.
And I would appreciate, as I'm trying to make a remark, Mister Mayor, do you have, if we're in favor of the residents, that I'm not, you know.
No, would, you would like to complete any, would you like to continue with anything further? Because I thought you were finished. That's the only reason. Okay, number twenty-five.
Being finished.
Okay, number twenty-five.
Uh, twenty-five is, so of course, we're going through, you know, this whole issue and um so I, although I brought this use of stipend for face masks at the last council meeting, um I just realized that there are a broad number of uses. The council's stipend should be allowed to cover during the COVID nineteen pandemic. That allows for, to cover expenses and projects to support the safety and health of Hawthorne citizens related to this pandemic. Um, so I spoke with our city attorney to see what avenue we can move forward on this. And um, he said to get, I wanted to give direction to the attorney to draft uh either a resolution, I believe, that we can repeal our discre- our repeal our discretionary fund resolution for this year and next year, or at least for myself, and then set up a fund for the benefits that benefits the health, safety, and welfare of our residents.
This is a great idea. Uh, Mister City Attorney, could you go ahead and do it?
Uh, yes, and I believe uh uh Mister Shadbear is, has already uh, is working on that for the uh budget amendment uh for the next meeting, to basically uh move the money from the discretionary fund into this uh, uh this other fund to help the residents.
Correct.
Like to, I would just like to comment that um, we're, we're um, we're in a position, I, I think it's a, a great idea. I think that uh, you know, uh, it's, it would put our money to a great use, because this year we won't be able to do very much with it anyway, considering the fact that a lot of the reason that we give this that, that we, that we use these stipends is to benefit the residents when they have, and the, and the um homeowners associations, when they have their uh, their events. And we're in a position now where nobody's going to be having any events, at least for the next two or three months.
Absolutely.
The money would not be put to good use anyway, and so I think that this would be a great way of using the money um for that purpose. So that's fine with me.
Okay.
Did out.
Okay.
Okay.
Item number twenty-six.
Quite a bit. Uh, so for this one, um, after setting up the test center uh in Hawthorne, uh of course, there's been discussions of how to reopen the city. Um, following the governor's uh six points. Uh, of course, one of them is testing. Um, the idea is when you get tested, once you have your positive um verification, you're allowed to go, kind of go back into work, and that's your like badge of approval. Um, so I want to establish an ad hoc task force with representatives from the city department to develop a plan of action in coordination with the County of Los Angeles and the State of California to quickly, but safely return the city of Hawthorne to a pre-COVID state status um from the emergency shutdown uh for actual, for council action. And the whole idea behind the, we don't want to shotgun ourselves to reopen so rapidly, where we'll create a second shutdown or a second pandemic regarding the virus. So I'm establishing an ad hoc from our city departments, working with the county and the state, using the numbers we're having from the testing facility. I think it would be a great venture um to really start opening up the city, um possibly even faster. I mean, depending on, you know, our numbers and depending on how the virus is contained. Um, if we're able to knock off that list sooner than any other city, uh we can start moving forward. And there's a lot of commercial sites and a lot of residents that really have no idea how to reopen, what's allowed to reopen, what are the rules are, do they have to wear masks inside, is there six-feet difference? So having that task force set up some sort of protocol, working with the state and county to just have something in paper or writing that will be easier for our residents and our commercial businesses to safely reopen and not, you know, indict themselves or the, the public.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Well, on April twenty-eighth, I gave a directive to Army to create a committee of the head department with the uh city attorney and even the chief to come up with the protocol based on the county and the state to reopen the business. So, uh
Councilmember what, let, let him finish. We'll give you, we'll give you, we'll give you a full uh, an opportunity to
Uh, because all, all these documents are already ready, is just a matter of uh Samuel English got together with the head department, because all these documents already have guidelines and protocols from the state and from the county. That specifically tells you, for example, today the governor knows about a restaurant. So it's all in here step by step, how people have to be in the restaurant, that they cannot have no tablecloth, they cannot have uh prepared uh serverwares on the tables. So all these things are already done. We just need to print and put it in our website and, and the, the the, the committee already that I suggest on April eight, twenty-eight, just to get this information to the business people to the restaurants, to ev- everybody that is out to open, because now there is a list that came from the county, that came from the state. They're already there, and like I said, I gave a directive on the twenty-eighth already, the, for the city departments to get all this information to our business so they can start opening safely way. Another point, uh Mister Haidara Watt, somebody can be testing today for the coronavirus, can test negative, but tomorrow, in a few hours, he can become positive again. So one test is not even enough. So that's what they have to do, testing and testing and testing. So because we know the virus now is, is getting uh out there, even for those people that had the virus before, and they're re-infecting again. So even one test can be done in one hour, it's negative, but he can go outside and, 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 and be contaminated again. So, so all these will be false, negative, false positive out there. So, so that's why we need to be very careful, that we need to follow the guideline from the state, from the county, and from the CDC that actually today said they're gonna put something online soon. But we have guidelines and protocols already set up by the state and the county. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so to answer the questions, um, and again, it comes with misinformation, so I, I appreciate you, you know, stressing your opinion, uh Montero, um, but again, if you do a further dive, um, i- i- it, the governor asked that, yes, it's good that we're moving forward in this kind of fashion, but it is up to individual cities based on how they're feeling regarding their city. Like, every city's not made the same. The constituent base is not made the same, how the virus hit is not the same. So having our own task force to slowly reopen safely is the best way. And to put your point about the testing, that's why we brought it to Hawthorne. I brought the testing site knowing that you have this chance of it coming back and mutating. So I'm there from, I'm working there every day, inside, gloved up, some of our employees see me inside now, wondering why I'm in there at ground zero, basically with the virus, and I'm saying, hey, look, this is the, one of the ways we have to open and move forward. Yes, there's information from the state and county, but they still advise that every city individually should be taking their own precautions and their own measures of how they want to reopen. You have some that are pushing to reopen quickly because of their residents, and some that are fearful of reopening. Um, so taking a paintbrush and just painting our entire city with just general kind of measures isn't sufficient. Um, and, and it, it's the wrong way to approach this. So setting up an ad hoc committee to specifically look at the city of Hawthorne, what measures that we need, what, what protocol do we advise to help our city, not the entire, just our city. There's a difference now. There's a big difference between countywide, statewide, and now just, this is for Hawthorne. So again, this is for the residents, I get where you're coming from, I do, but that's just about disseminating information, is what you're saying. It's very different than having all the departments that deal with planning, that deal with parks and rec, that deal with our city's attorney staff. Uh, I sat down with, um, as you mentioned, English Samuel and Vaughn at the testing center, discussing we should have an ad hoc committee set up to safely move our own individual city forward. So a- a- again, if you want to go back to asking those individuals, we've just discussed this a few days ago. When we decided, let's move on in a task force to slowly reopen. So I, I appreciate you bringing up English Samuel, but again, we talked about this recently at the testing center, and this was the best recommendation to help our residents move forward and our commercial. That is simple, and it's not supposed to be
I would like to, I would like to express a different position. Um, I, I agree with you to the extent that I think it, it needs to have its Hawthorne stamp on it. But I think we should do it at, as a council. I don't think we need ad hoc committee. I think we should set the protocols right here at city council meetings. I think we could get some input, because I, like, like, uh, like uh Mayor Proton Montero, I've collected a lot of information from the county, from the state, and from um, and uh, from CDC, et cetera. And I think we all have a lot of information, and I don't see any reason why we can't, as a council, sit down at a council meeting and, and put the, all this information together and come up with, come up with our um, our own stamp, a stamp on it and say what we want to see for the city of Hawthorne. I don't think
One at a time, one at a time, we're gonna, please.
Task force could include the council and our
Councilmember what, you're gonna get an opportunity after Councilwoman Olivia Valentine, just go ahead.
I don't think we need a task force. I don't think we need a committee. I think what we need is to have perhaps a staff report which gives us the background information that we need with all, with a compilation of all of the um uh, the, the protocols from the different agencies. I think we need to take that and at a city council meeting, make decisions right there at the council meeting as to what we want to see in Hawthorne. I think it should have our stamp as, as our five council members. Not necessary, not necessarily an ad hoc committee, not necessarily another committee. I think it should be our decision as I think it should be our decision as the, as the council.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem and then Councilmember.
Actually, I do agree with Ms. Valentine, what she said. And actually, I was going to suggest that the next meeting, we bring Samuel English uh, to give us an update of all these protocol that has been putting out there. Uh, so we can, like Ms. Valentine said, this five of us can make decision how we wanna city to reopen. But again, to Mr. Haidari's point is, our city, we don't have a health department. We are part of the Los Angeles County Health Department that, that dictate and mandate how we should open safely. So we have to follow those directives because we do not have a health department in our city. We don't have a, nobody that is an expert in disease prevention. So, so we have to follow the health, uh, LA County Health Department guidelines. We have to follow the government guidelines because he have a health department also. So, and the CDC. So that is Ms. Valentine have a great idea to bring all these protocols together. And the best person that I believe is Samuel English that has been giving us all these updates every day. And even the chief, you know, I want to hear what he have to say because his officer is out there in the frontline talking to business, talk to people, so they know best. So that is where, uh, on, on last meeting on the twenty-eighth, I said to the, or city manager to get together with some head department to begin talking the process, how to reopen Hawthorne. But I do agree with Ms. Valentine, we need to do it publicly, maybe uh, the next city council, maybe it will be something that we can a- agendize there that Samuel will come, the chief will come, Arnie, any part, the, the parts and recs, people can give their uh, expertise, opinion, and then we said, okay, this is what's going to happen. But with the guidance of the LA County Health Department because they are the one who dictate how the city can open healthy way, safe way, not just somebody with master's degree in business because I have a master's degree in disease prevention and education. So I can talk more about diseases than anybody else. So that's my point and I agree with Ms. Valentine.
Okay, do we have a consensus for this?
Well, you said Councilman Watt after
Oh yeah, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. Uh, my, my, my mistake. Go ahead.
All right.
Sorry about that.
So, uh, to answer your point, um, so again, maybe you don't understand the meaning of a task force. Um, so the way we're writing it now is to give you guys clarification because again, I don't, you guys haven't seen the, or have worked on this um, resolution or the idea of it. So to kind of give you some background on how we're trying to implement, uh, yes, from the CDC and the governor's office, it is mentioning that every individual city implement their own task force to follow these guidelines. Now, as a council, we give broad vision. We tell them what we'd like to see and yes, we're going to be telling them what way we want it to move forward. But it's all about implementation. The task force is there to help with implementation. Just as the mayor mentioned about before, about how you can have all these, you know, measures in place, it's all about how to enforce and implement. I don't believe I'll see you out there in the field, Ms. Valentine, or you, Mr. Montero, or any of us out there implementing this on the field because I'm the only one in that testing site implementing tests. So I get where you guys are coming from. Yes, you just talked about putting out information. That's why it was never agendized. Two, the task force is going to have them pushing what, as a council, we decide the protocol is regarding all the information coming from the English Samuel and then area G meeting. That's how it's set up. The committee is there to implement whatever the council is pushing forward because again, there are a lot of measures out there that we are, we can't sit there every day to watch implementation. We need to set up something, some sort of a task force or something for them to move forward and implement the process. So there's the level of confusion. I don't want it to be taken out and like all of a sudden spearheaded and twisted into some other new initiative. No, it's coming from council like everything else we do. We set the big grand vision protocol. We need there to be something to implement and watch to make sure the guidelines are being followed and met. Uh, so that's to clear out for the residents so they don't get confused with the back and forth. Um, so it's laid out that way. Uh, we give decision, we need something to implement. And as in, you know, as you're teaching law, there's three different branches. You need one that gives out the rules and then one to implement and enforce. And that's what it is.
Well, we can't, I don't think we can give out
Well, just a moment, just a moment. So, uh, we have, I think we'll give the floor to, to Councilwoman Valentine real quick and then we'll go to Mike, uh, Councilmember Mike Taeda. Oh, point of information, by the way, it's Samuel English, it's not English Samuel, so his name is Samuel. Go ahead, go ahead. So maybe we're talking the wrong guy, I don't know. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, I don't disagree with the broad vision concept because I think we do have to give the broad vision. But I think the, but the implementation has to come after the broad vision and we haven't even given the broad vision yet. So when we, when we come together as a council with all of the information that we get from the CDC, from the, from the, from, from the state, from the county.
Okay.
We come together with the broad vision and then the implementation begins after that. But we can't implement until we give the broad vision. That's what I think has to come first.
All right, so, uh, do we, so we can move on to the next, after we got a close session?
My, my
My, Councilmember, I'm so sorry. He'll be the last one.
Yeah, I, I, you know, listening to both, both uh arguments and you can't take away the city council's uh uh, vote and control over something so important, you know? And there's a lot of very, very smart people in this city. And I'm sure that with the city council and plenty of guidance, uh, we can handle that and we can uh tell people or show people what needs to be done. In terms of who's gonna implement that are the same people that implemented all the closures, you know, you had uh, code enforcement closing people down, are you going to have some of the city uh, staff uh, taking care of, ensuring that people do what they're supposed to do? I don't know if it's very you know, the, 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 the um the testing was really necessary. It was really great to bring that to the city, but it came really sudden where you had to have a special meeting uh the day before and there was a commitment, uh, that, you know, there was a, the city was committed to do this and it was the right thing to do. Testing is exactly the right thing to do. But um, you can't take away the council's ability to control what's going on in the city.
The council
To the chair.
You can't, you can't take
Right, uh, yeah.
To the chair.
Point of order, point of order.
I understand what's happening. I mean, I'm not dumb. I understand what's going on, but
Point of order, point of order. Point of order.
Residents. I understand where you're coming from, I get it, but the confusion to the residents is unfair for you to suppress someone talking to clear the confusion.
No, but the point of order, point of order, you'll get your opportunity right now.
It's the council. Can you, I mean, I'm speaking to the residents to help them understand what's going on.
But the point of order, there's order, there's a specific decorum. You'll get an opportunity right after I finish. Will you let
The city council, that's the language. So where you guys are coming from, oh, you're taking out the council.
Point of order.
The information that way, it's very wrong. It's including the city council. We're not taking, not giving up that infra, we're not giving up that authority. We're moving forward. But a city council is part of a city department. Just to put that out there, there's no confusion and the council is going to be in that giving direction. So you guys can argue all day long, but I'm glad I stressed the difference for the residents to see.
All right.
To the chair, I want to
Just go ahead because there's a point of order. We need to respect everybody who speaks.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
I want, I want to make a motion on Ms. Valentine's uh idea and to extend it. Uh, like I said, for next meeting, I would like to see a presentation from Samuel English. And the chief, and the chief and all the, all the, all the head department, it, you know, even from the code enforcement because it's Greg or somebody.
As part of the departments, Montero.
Yeah, so, so
Point of order, Councilmember Watt, only one person, get another opportunity.
From Ms. Valentine and for us to have a presentation next meeting that have all, uh, you know, bring us with all these protocol that have been established by the state, CDC and LA County uh, for the city, for us to talk about how we want to reopen our city on a safe way based on the guidelines given by the authorities that we do not have. Okay, so we bring that up.
Point of order, we don't want you to interrupt. You're starting Okay, you know what, I'm going to, if this, if these interruptions continue, we'll temporarily cease the meeting. So everybody gets an opportunity to go speak.
Item.
You have, so just, just
Get a game when it's for the residents. It's not a game
You need to follow a specific decorum. You're just, there's no interruptions from your end or from Councilmember Monteros. It's a fair warning for everybody. Okay, so, go ahead. Did you finish your comment?
No, I'm saying that
Oh, Councilmember Montero, Mayor, Mayor Protem, you finished?
Well, uh, to the ma- to the chair, I just want to
Come back and argue about it again. And it's sad that you're trying to make this a political game, Mr. Montero. I suggest you stay there.
There's a point of order here. He's been, he has a floor.
Oh, there's a point of order of, of trying to dismantle something that's for the residents to make
Councilmember Watt, you're not following decorum. The council, Mayor Protem has, has the floor. Go ahead, Mayor Protem, finish. And then we'll give you a floor to, uh, Councilmember Watt. Go ahead.
Okay, question to Russell. Russell, so do we need to vote on my motion that I, I agree with Ms. Valentine?
I didn't hear a second on your motion.
I seconded.
Seconded, so. Mr. Mayor, call for the vote.
Go ahead, vote. You can comment, you can comment after. Go ahead, we'll call for the vote because we need to move on to the close session. City clerk?
You can vote on it.
Uh, Councilmember Watt?
On the motion of what? To move forward the presentation on the idea of having a task force presented to let us look forward to reopening the city? That wrote up?
Yeah, of course. Restate that, please. Okay? We don't want the residents to, oh, misunderstand. Go ahead. City Attorney, can you repeat the motion?
So can someone repeat the motion then, just so we're all on the same page?
And then what we're killing at the same time? So the residents understand. Russell?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Montero had made a motion based upon what, uh, Councilmember Olivia Valentine had said. And that was seconded, which was a little different from, uh, uh, Councilmember Watt's, uh, item number twenty-six.
Yeah, so can we repeat that? So then we all, we're all on the same page on what?
Explain the difference, um, Russell as well for, um, public record.
Uh, I think Mr. Montero and Ms. Valentine can explain their specific motion as to what, how they want to change item number twenty-six.
Well, we're not talking about, uh, to the chair, we're not talking about, we're not talking about item twenty-six, okay? So basically, item twenty-six being table, put aside. So what we're talking is Ms. Valentine suggests that the council should sit down in the next meeting and come up with additional prot- protocol, how we're gonna reopen our city safely basis on CDC, state of California, LA County, so we can give our staff and the public correct directives, how to reopen their business.
So this same item and language.
And I asked to bring Samuel English because he has all this information that he can tell the people, these other businesses can be open and you can open this way, that way, that way. And then we as a council would say, yes, we agree. This is our city of Hawthorne protocol basis on CDC, basis on LA County, based on the state of California. We are going to do this on these guidelines.
It's the same item.
And I, and I just want to clarify that
I'm gonna call for the vote. Councilwoman Valentine has just called for the vote and you can comment after the vote.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. City Clerk?
City Attorney Russell, are we good with what was stated by Montero as a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
All right, Councilmember Watt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Let's move on to the elected officials' reports and recommendations. Uh, we'll start off with our treasurer. David Patterson, are you here, sir?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Uh, just want to thank the community for tuning in um, and, uh, participating, uh, in this process. Um, it's important that your voices are heard, although we're at home, uh, I want to encourage you guys to call in and submit your, your thoughts, your opinions, uh, and continue to participate in the process, especially during this, um, really important times. And just want to thank the, the council as a whole for all the different initiatives that you guys have put together to support the, the residents, um, um, seniors, um, and our students. That's it.
Go ahead. Thank you, sir. Um, thank you so much. City Clerk?
Uh, thank you. Yes, uh, so first of all, thank you for joining us from home. Um, I just have a couple of updates. The first is a communication update. Um, as of today, we have ten thousand one hundred and sixty-six members connected to our Nextdoor account. And we have, um, one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight members following us on Instagram. Uh, so we've been receiving a lot of positive feedback in terms of the information we're providing our neighbors, uh, during these times. So, uh, we just, you know, I continue to ask our neighbors, if you know anybody who's not on Nextdoor, please get them on Nextdoor. If you want to follow us on Instagram, um, we're at City, City of Hawthorne, CA. So City of Hawthorne, CA. Um, next, um, as I shared with you in the past, if there's any uh, any directors, elected officials who have resources that will be helpful to our community, please email those resources to me. Uh, so then we can share them, um, via, um, our social media, put them on our website, um, et cetera. Because again, if you guys have some resources for our community, um, it's best that they get them, um, from different individuals uh, or different entities. Um, I have an update on the census, um, because as Councilmember had, uh, Montero has reminded us a few times, it's just important that we get our residents to, uh, respond to the census because the more, the more they respond, the more resources we're gonna get. So as of now, we have fifty-six point two percent of residents who have responded, um, which can definitely be improved. Again, it's fifty-six point two of residents who have responded. Um, um, comparatively speaking, uh, we're at three, three hundred and sixty-eighth city from four hundred and eighty-two cities in California. Um, so I'm pretty competitive, so I'm hoping you guys are as well, so you know that we're being outranked by a lot of our local cities. Uh, so for example, again, we're at three sixty-eight, Gardenia's at two eighty-two, Manhattan Beach is at two hundred and seventy-seven, El Segundo is a hundred and twentieth. Um, so I'm asking all our elected officials, um, everyone watching at home, uh, to respond and to also share the information um, with everyone in, in our city to make sure you respond, uh, to the census. It's extremely important. If we can get to eighty-three percent, we'll be the number one city. So let's try to get to eighty-three percent. Thank you. Um, and, uh, last, I just have some good news. Um, I had shared with you guys and I thanked our council members, um, and mayor that helped us out with our project to contact our senior citizens. Um, so I shared what we did with some of our local cities, um, the, uh, the city clerks from our local areas and they, um, one of them contacted me from Lomita and they're actually gonna be, they are doing the same thing. So we connected them with the county clerk, um, to get them the necessary information. And now they're actually, uh, contacting all their senior citizens to tell them about all the resources that they have to offer them. So um, again, thank you for, to everybody who helped us out with that project. Um, and, uh, just to end, uh, happy, uh, belated Mother's Day to all the amazing mothers out there, uh, includes, including Councilmember Valentine.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mike Taeda?
Uh, yeah, this was a very spirited, uh, meeting and it's good to argue about what's the best way to help. Uh, I like, uh, the idea that the city council has a last word on how we're gonna do things, but, um no, I, 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 I look forward to the day. I was very happy to see Alondra Golf Course open, a few people, uh, out there playing golf. Um, reminded me of the day after nine eleven when you finally saw a plane coming into LAX to land. I don't know how many of you guys remember that. But it was a very eerie feeling for about four or five days when nothing in the air. And then you saw that first airplane. That's the kind of feeling that I got when I saw a few golfers out there for the first time. It's very unusual to see a golf course, uh, empty for a couple of months like that. So, uh, the, it's, we're coming back and I hope that we get creative and I hope, I appreciate, uh, haters, uh, enthusiasm for bringing things together and, um, but, uh, I, I do think that it's the responsibility of the city council to have a big hand in, in how we open up and the, uh, the information that we get. to have a big hand in, in how we open up and the, uh, the information that we get and, and where it comes from. So no, I, I think it was, uh, it was a good discussion. Everybody wants to help. Everybody wants to help. And, uh, so look forward to the meeting when we talk a little more and, and, and get closer to that day when we actually can go to a restaurant and, and, uh, and I hope, you know, some cities, uh, are using some very creative, um, things. You know, we have big sidewalks where we could have restaurants take chairs out to the sidewalk, and some cities have even closed out streets so restaurants can, uh, put tables out there and, and, you know, uh, so you have to use different, different, uh, you, you have to be creative. You have to be creative and, and it'll work. So anyway, I'm, I'm hoping that it's sooner than later. Sooner than later. So that's it for me. Thank you, guys. Council member Hadarawat?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanna wish everyone a happy Mother's Day out there. Um, we've sent out, you know, a lot of, uh, Happy Day Mother, uh, kinda messaged out to the public, especially for all the Hawthorne moms out there, um, sending out information to kinda get, you know, the word out of where to get resources and stuff like that. So I'm glad that the residents are receptive of what we're doing as a council and as a city, as, as, and, and as individual members. Uh, I'm glad that the city's moving forward on the initiatives I brought forward. Um, and it's great to be in the age of, uh, digital information, uh, that's uh, the, the best kind of way to actually get, you know, the truth out, information out. Um, you know, it's, 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 it's the best way to do it. Um, so this way, you know, I do have to apologize for the residents, you know, having certain items be played like games. Uh, it's, it's saddening, but at least luckily in the digital age, you know, having the right information being put out there very easily to stop confusion is, is something very easy, um, for members to do, especially myself. So I, I'm glad that we moved forward in all of this. Uh, I'm glad we're looking out for the residents, and we're taking the direction I'm laying out to really get the city back on its feet during this whole pandemic. Uh, and I wanna thank them for watching, um, even though they're not watching a lot from Zoom. Um, I'll be disseminating it out like I've been doing everything before to really keep them up to date, and, uh, especially with these items here. Um, it's great. So I'm glad we're moving forward, and, uh, that is all.
Thank you. Um, so do you, councilwoman Olivia Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanna also, um, echo those comments. I wanna thank, uh, thank everyone for a very spirited debate and for all of your contributions. Councilman Awad, Councilman Tayeda, and I, and I want to mention to Councilman Tayeda, I love your idea about the tables on the sidewalk. I want to explore that with you. I'd like for you to, uh, to, to, let, let's talk about that some more as a council about doing that. I think that's a great idea. Having the businesses put their, 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 uh, their products out on the tables and perhaps serving to the residents out there, that maybe that's something we, we can explore further. I'd like to explore that. Um, I also want to mention that, um, the Paycheck Protection Program loans, um, the program was so popular that it ran out of money and had to be refunded by Congress on April twenty-seventh. But it's not going to last forever. Now, the fundings, the, the, they say the funding will last until June thirtieth. I don't think that's true at all. I think it's going to be gone in another week or two. So I really wanna urge the businesses, if you want to take advantage of this, don't wait. Contact www.treasury.gov for detailed information. If you recall, this is a program that allows businesses to take out loans, to keep their employees on staff, or to hire back those they had to let go because of the impact of coronavirus. So again, please, take advantage of it. I don't know how many Hawthorne businesses have taken advantage of it. I would love to know. But if you haven't, please do so, and this information is on the website. Oh, I believe it's on the website. If it's not, we're going to make sure that it gets on the website, and I'm going to ask, um, uh, Chief Ishi, if you would please, um, check that and make sure it gets on the website, 'cause I really would like for our businesses to, um, to take advantage of this if at all possible. And thanks to everyone again for a great discussion, and, um, have a good week, a good safe week. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, uh, Montero?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be with me, 'cause I have a lot of information, okay? Uh, first I wanna piggyback on, uh, Dr. Paul Jimenez about the census. Um, and I would love to, to ask the chief and, uh, Russell to give message to Arnie. Uh, if we can put again the census, uh, information on our billboards, okay, because, uh, fifty-six percent is very low, uh, respond. Uh, and census people trying to reach out to all of us, and even, uh, they ask me for information about the mayor, uh, because they wanna reach out to us because we one of the cities undercount, okay? So we need to put, uh, census, uh, information on the billboard, on the boulevards, uh, to make sure that the people go and do the, the questionnaire online, okay? It's just, basically, it's only ten questions. Uh, because like fifty-six percent, that's mean we, you know, forty-four percent of the federal money would not come to Hawthorne if that number continued to be that way. So I, I, I'm, I'm with Paul, you know, let's get at least, you know, eighty to ninety percent, because we need all the money that we can get from the federal government, okay? So on that one. Uh, also, I wanna talk about, because I did attend the Zoom meeting for the, um, um, the Clean Power Alliance, you know, the Clean Power Alliance, you know, is, is our utility bill that is under the, uh, Edison. So the Clean Power Alliance is gonna give, uh, one million dollar away to the, to the customers, um, that have problems about paying their bills, okay? So, uh, between twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars is gonna go for the residential and also to the commercial, because remember, the Hawthorne is part of the Clean Power Alliance, and right now it's about thirty-one cities, and they're gonna be one million dollar, they're gonna give away. So if you want to get that rebate, uh, you have to go online, you know, customerservice@cleanpoweralliance.org. Again, customerservice@cleanpoweralliance.org, and the customer support number is eight 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 five eight five three seven eight eight. So I'm going to send this information to Dr. Paul Jimenez, so he can put it on the, uh, our social media, okay? Uh, another meeting that I attended via Zoom was the, uh, homeless task force for the South Bay Cops. Uh, and I have to say, uh, thank you Vaughn Norris, uh, and because he applied for a grant, and now we do have a, um, homeless coordinator for the City of Hawthorne. Uh, his name is Joseph Ramirez. It's a Hawthorne homeless coordinator that's working with Vaughn, and I'm pretty sure with the task force to make sure that our homeless population is taken care of. Another, uh, service that people can take advantage of, especially the hotels and motels, the county of Los Angeles is trying to get, uh, people, uh, you know, to do agreement with them. They call the Project Room Key, that the hotel and motel can contract with the county, uh, to host some of the homeless people. And these homeless people ha- is only those people that are not COVID-nineteen, uh, positive, okay? So there's, it is not gonna be, uh, people that has been, uh, diagnosed with the COVID-nineteen. So the hotel motels, if they wanna contract with the city, or we're not in the city, we're the county of Los Angeles, Lhasa, um, so they can contact, uh, Vaughn or Josie Ramirez to give you more information, or they can contact me, I can send them more information. If hotel and motel wants to be a contractor for the, for the county of Los Angeles to host some of the homeless people that have no houses to go. And these people has to be screened, uh, for COVID-nineteen because they want them to be clean before they get in, okay? So if you want more information, you could contact me via my email, Amontero@acityofHawthorne.org. Uh, the other thing that I wanna commend, uh, Kimberly Matt from the Housing Department for giving us the, uh, the action plan for the CDBG monies and, and, and home funds. And, uh, I wanna say thank you to follow up, uh, of my directive to contact, uh, the Michael Learning Center and the Family Justice Center, uh, that now is part of our public service, community service, because, uh, you know, you know me, I'm a nonprofit, uh, guru that always tried to promote some other nonprofit to get fund from, from CDBG. So I wanna commend, uh, Kimberly and the consultant for, uh, to meet the, with the Michael Learning Place and the Family Justice Center, and, and so they are part now of our action plan for twenty twenty-one and beyond, so they can get some fun for their project. So thank you, Kimberly, for that. Um, the other thing that I wanna mention, if it's possible, uh, maybe Russell and, uh, and Chief Ishi can help us on that with Eric at the channel twenty-two. You know, some, uh, to contact some of the high schools, so we can put some picture of the graduate, you know, the seniors that is graduating, uh, right now in May. Uh, maybe we can get some pictures in our channel twenty-two, uh, you know, pictures of the, of the graduate seniors that is graduating. Uh, because right now they don't have a graduation ceremony. Uh, maybe we can contact Hawthorne High, uh, and Hawthorne, um, Math and Science Academy, and even losing it, that we can put the face of those kids that are graduating from, from high school in our channel twenty-two, okay? Uh, Russell, can you follow on that for me, please? Thank you. Um, let me see, what else do I have here? Oh, also, Al Camino College is giving a free, uh, ESL classes online. So just go to, uh, visit, uh, www.alcamino.edu/freeesl. So free ESL classes, uh, to learn English and, and to, to speak writing and ESL, uh, English for free at Al Camino College. So, so go online and do that. Uh, let me see, I think I'm almost done. So, so again, uh, please follow up on that census, uh. Russell and Tal Arnie, uh, maybe you guys can send an email to the consultant. The census on the billboard, because there's basically censustwentytwenty.gov, and then people can go there and try to fill out those form, that, that questionnaire, because we need, we need people to participate. Again, thank you for the spirit of democracy. Uh, this is America, right? All, all of us have a, a voice, and we are here to do the best we can for our people. That people that elect us to be here as, as a councilman, uh, to do the business of the people, to make sure that they deserve, uh, our, our trust, and, and that we are doing things right for the people of Hawthorne. So thank you for all of you for your service.
Thank you. There's no go-bags?
Nope.
Okay, good. All right, so I wanna thank everybody for being here, everybody out in City of Hawthorne that's watching this meeting live on Zoom and on cable TV. So, uh, I really appreciate the discussions that we had today. We have a great set of ideas that we have. Just wanna repeat that we need to follow decorum, follow decorum, and, uh, every person has a free, uh, section of time to be able to express their ideas. Everybody can have a rebuttal if they so choose, but we just simply can't have people, uh, interrupting. Feedback that I got from the last meeting was that there was just too many frequent interruptions, so we just need to avoid that. Everybody gets to make whatever points. You, people agree with you or disagree with you, that just comes out in the discussion, orderly discussion. Uh, but I appreciate all my councilmember colleagues, uh, for participating. Um, that we saw today, right? So, uh, also, uh, with regards, I'm really happy that we're going to be able to have that urgency ordinance, uh, for the rent, eviction, rental eviction, uh, moratorium for, to help the community members, the renters and the commercial tenants. Uh, we're aiming to have that on Thursday so that the city attorney can prepare that. So thank you for the support, and, uh, thank you, councilmember Hadarawat, uh, for joining me, for joining together in that, and the rest of the city council, of course. Um, so I wanna also congratulate all our staff members for participating, uh, and for being out there on the front lines, delivering food, packing up lunches, uh, for policing our streets, cutting our trees, keeping our infrastructure going. Uh, really wanna congratulate them. Then I also wanna congratulate every single one of my councilmember colleagues. Everybody is doing their part to be able to help the community during this time. Nobody is, uh, sitting, uh, at home doing nothing, whether it's dissemination of information, being out there on the front lines, organizing resources. I believe that that's very important. Personally, I don't like to have a whole litany of the things I do at a council meeting. I think the residents themselves will know what I do for them, uh, but, I mean, maybe not everybody disagrees, and they want to present all the things that they do at the council meetings, so, but that's of everybody's free choosing. Um, but, just wanna underline that everybody here on the council, uh, including our, including our, uh, city treasurer and our city clerk, everybody is working to keep our community safe. So I wanna congratulate all of you guys. So I didn't know that there, I, I was surprised by like the, uh, the resumes that were being presented during the council meeting. I didn't know certain people had masters in this and masters in that, so I mean, you know, I'll come with my resume next time, maybe. Okay, so, uh, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the closed session? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to agenda. To the agenda, we are in recess.
Wash your hands for twenty seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20 plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, I'm playing. Just because you're at home.
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus? Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20 plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
Real property negotiator has been instructed.
Is there anything further from council members or staff? Okay, I'm going to want to end this meeting in a moment of silence for all those who have passed from the coronavirus pandemic. So let's just close our eyes for a brief minute, a brief second. So may they all rest in eternal peace. So this meeting is now adjourned.